Stop five o'clock, August 5th, 2019. I call the regular meeting of the Waverly City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Bergen.
Here.
Drinkhouse.
Here.
Cengis.
Here.
McKenzie.
Here.
Raffi.
Here.
Cher.
Present.
Wollstein.
Here.
All present and accounted for. If you would all rise and join me in pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item is approve the agenda as presented. I entertain a motion.
I will move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion, correction, traditions? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Voted? Minutes or agenda is approved as presented. Next item is approve the minutes of the July 1st, 2019, regular meeting minutes and July 15th, 2019, regular meeting minutes. And you have before you a corrected copy of the July 15th minutes. I think some language. Get corrected is all.
Yeah, it's really.
Very minor spelling.
Not to consider corrected because it's already done.
I will move approval of the July 1st and the corrected July 15th minutes.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any council discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Voted? July 1st and 15th, 2019, regular meeting minutes are hereby approved. Guest found councilperson this evening is guest of Brian Bergen. Brian, would you do the honors?
So it's my pleasure to introduce Chris Glazer. I met Chris actually through Cub Scouts because our wives were in Leleche League together. So we had sons who were in Cub Scouts and Weebles about the same time. So, but I'll let Chris Glazer introduce himself more.
My name is Chris Glazer and I'm a resident of Waverly. I'm actually a transplant from Nebraska back in 2014. Before anybody asked the question, yes, I'm still a Husker. I work at Cedar Valley Hospice. We have a location here in Waverly, but I work out of the Waterloo office and I'm happy to be here. Thanks for having me.
Very good. Chris is also on the Airport Commission.
I am, yep. I've been on the commission three years, I believe.
Something like that, yes. Appreciate your service and you have all the rights of council to take part in discussion except to vote. So. Next item is a proclamation for National Night Out. I will read the proclamation. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch are sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August 6th, 2019 entitled National Night Out. And whereas the 36th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Waverly to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas the citizens of Waverly play a vital role in assisting the Waverly Police Department to control crime, drug, and violence in the city of Waverly. And this partnership is an important goal of the National Night Out 2019. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of Waverly be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drug, and violence in the city of Waverly. And whereas police community partnership, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes for the National Night Out program. Now therefore, I, Mayor Dean Soish, do hereby call upon all citizens of Waverly to join the Waverly Police Department and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 36th Annual National Night Out on August 6th, 2019. Further, let it be resolved that I, Mayor Dean Soish, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 6th, 2019, as National Night Out in the city of Waverly. Before we take a. Entertain a motion to accept that. One of the officers is here and if he would step up to the mic and kind of explain all what activities are going to be happening for the public.
Sure. We always have a bunch of inflatables and food and good time for the kids. Always a big turnout and if you want to come join us, it's free event. So good time and lots of fun for the kids, so.
Be at Coleman Park?
Coleman Park, yep. 4:30 to 8:30.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You bet.
Now I can entertain a motion for National Night Out proclamation.
I have proclamation proclaiming August 6th, 2019, as National Night Out.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any council discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Voted? National Night Out is hereby proclaimed for August 6th, tomorrow night, 2019. Another proclamation. Approving American Wind Week. It goes as thus. Whereas Iowa ranked second in the nation for wind power capacity with nearly 9,000 megawatts installed, producing enough electricity to power nearly 2.1 million homes. And whereas Iowa's wind production also ranked second in the nation at 33.7% of all in-state electricity production with current and future projects estimated to bring winds' share of electricity production to over 40% by 2020. And whereas Iowa is home to 114 wind farms and 10 wind-related manufacturing facilities. And whereas Waverly Utilities was the first municipality to put up wind turbines in Iowa. And whereas wind power, wind powers approximately in cities and communities all across Iowa, resulting in $58 million in state and local tax payments and $20 to $30 million in land lease payments in 2018 alone. And whereas wind farms in Iowa have attracted over $16.3 billion in private investments to date, helping to spur critical investments in communities that fund manufacturing jobs, education programs, and local economic development projects. Whereas the development of wind power now supports nearly 10,000 jobs across the state. And whereas the advancements in wind power will greatly enhance our ability to attract new businesses and talent to our state and community and wind energy will continue to grow as a major force in the U.S. economy. Now therefore, I, Dean Soish, Mayor of Waverly and the Waverly City Council do hereby recognize August 11th to 17th, 2019, as American Wind Week in Waverly and encourage Iowans to learn more about winds' impact on our community and celebrate Iowa's leadership in wind energy production. And again, there are some representatives from Waverly Utilities here. You'd like to say a few words?
Thanks, Mayor. Bob Buckingham, Chair of the Waverly Utilities Board. Appreciate you folks taking into consideration this proclamation. Obviously, wind energy is very important for Iowa, but really important for the United States and the globe with sustainable energy becoming a very, very important thing for our climate. You can note that Waverly has been a leader in wind energy with the first turbine built by municipality in 1993, I believe it was. And also, wind energy is important for Waverly for jobs. It's noted here that 10,000 jobs in Iowa and a lot of those, several of those jobs are here in Waverly, particularly through United Equipment, which is a key contributor to the wind energy turbines themselves. I won't go into the, because I can't, go into the technicalities of that. But again, appreciate you taking this on as a proclamation.
Daryl?
Thanks, Bob. Daryl Wenzel, just want to mention, I'm from Nebraska originally. A few more notes about the wind turbines that Glenn Canyon had the foresight and the board at that time said to put those turbines in. They're 900 kilowatt turbines, so on today's scale, there are some of the smaller turbines. Large ones you see out in the country are usually 2.3 to 3 megawatt wind turbines. So much larger in the newer ones. But so that's 2.7 megawatts that we have in the three turbines that are around Waverly. And through our joint action agency with MEAN, we're also part of a 30-megawatt wind farm in the town I grew up in, Kimmel, Nebraska. So we take part of the wind off of that wind farm. So there is wind in our mix and wind is a good thing. So I just wish Glenn would have built, you know, 10 more back in the day. But thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Now I'll entertain a motion to accept the proclamation, please.
I'll move approval of the proclamation proclaiming August 6th, 2000, oops, sorry, August 11th through 17th, 2019, as American Wind Week.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor of the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Voted? Proclamation proclaiming August 11th to 17th as American Wind Week. And Governor Reynolds will also be making a proclamation later on. So it's not unique to Waverly. Now, public comments for any item that is not on the agenda? Is there anyone here that we should speak to something not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Following items will be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Pay request from L.A. Equipment Company for the 500 65-gallon, 65-gallon and 250 35-gallon blue recycling containers for the amount of $43,845.12. Pay request from WHKS and Company for the Adams Parkway Bridge repairs 2019 for the amount of $25,624.20. Pay request from WHKS and Company for the 2019 Waverly Biennial Bridge inspections for the amount of $1,125.42. Pay request from Stanley Consultants, Inc. for the Cedar River Parkway East Improvements 2018 for the amount of $64,714.80. Approved the purchase of a 2019 John Deere Z950R Z Track mower for $8,600 with a trade-in from P&amp;K Midwest of Waverly, Iowa for the Leisure Services Cemetery Division. Outdoor premise extension for Big Ben Poorhouse for an event on August 24th, 2019. Setting the public hearing date for August 19th, 2019 at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers of City Hall for the Waverly Health Center Expansion Project Site Plan Review and Amendment. And the cash disbursements for June 2019. I did ask Carla, or wanted to ask Carla if she had any feedback from any of the business neighbors to the poorhouse on that.
I actually called all of the business owners in that block of the alley, letting them know that the alley would be closed at 4:15 that afternoon and asked them if that was an issue, there was any issues with that. And they were all, except for one, I had to leave a message with, and that was Bow 121 Studio, or Bow Studio 121. But all others were just fine with it, more than happy.
Very good.
So when we said, "Well, I'll be calling."
Very good. Thank you. So the council was aware that there were no objections. Entertain a motion for this consent calendar.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion made in second. Did you approve the consent calendar?
I am confused about the second to last item, though. It states the material that you're believing that a public hearing is not required because of site plan amendments considering a minor change, been approved by city staff. And then the next sentence, because of the significance of the project, it's recommended that the public hearing be scheduled. Is this kind of just a belt, belt and suspenders kind of thing? You don't think it's necessary, but we're going to do one anyway?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of consent calendar, say yes.
Yes.
Voted? Consent calendar is hereby approved. Regular business. Resolution 19-127, a resolution approving an intergovernmental cooperative contract with Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments, or INTERCOG, to create a housing needs assessment. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-127, a resolution approving an intergovernmental cooperative contract with Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments, INTERCOG, to create a housing needs assessment for the not-to-exceed fee of $15,000.
Second.
Motion made in second. Counsel discussion.
I'm assuming that whatever group put this together, that you feel that they'll do an adequate job of, as opposed to a regular firm that does this.
INTERCOG's been doing this now for several years and we have a close connection with INTERCOG. We've worked with those people all the time. We felt that this was a good idea to, since it's a review of a prior one that we had done, we'd like to see how they do and I think they can do a good job.
Who did the last one, remind me, Bill?
Maxfield Associates from Minneapolis.
Thanks.
And that was done in 2014.
Most of the data was gathered in 2013 and 2014.
Is it typical to repeat these every five to 10 years or?
It is, especially if you have some changes that you want to see reflected in a new study, a new assessment. And I think we have that exact thing happening since the last one.
I think especially when we approved the last one, I think there were some citizen questions, probably not so much among council. I don't recall exactly, but there certainly were citizen questions about is there really a need for as much rental construction or is there that kind of demand? So I think it'll be interesting to, to see whether, you know, that has turned out to be the case or not.
I think it's just as important to do a study like this every few years as it is to do a traffic study or a study on the bridge structures or anything else. I think it's one of the things that we need to stay on top of and I really appreciate the efforts of moving forward on that. And I also appreciate efforts, excuse me, appreciated efforts of finding a somewhat lesser fee for, for doing this.
Yeah, no, the last time we did one, housing had been a topic of conversation for five or six years until you start putting data around it, contractors and folks can kind of put their hands around. We just kept talking about it. So yeah, I agree, it's time to do it again to see if the mix is correct, see if there's anything there. The only question I have here is wondering if I'm reading this correctly. In the contract itself, it says the time of performance is from July 1st of 2019 through June 30th of 2020. Is it really going to take that long to do?
We were hoping to actually do it in the spring anyway, so they wanted to get the contract signed. I think there may be some preliminary things that they do. They'll gather information over the next six months and actually put together the reports probably in spring.
Any other comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Cengis.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Wollstein.
Resolution 19-127, approving an intergovernmental contract with INTERCOG is approved. Resolution 19-128, a resolution approving the low bids for golf course maintenance equipment. Entertain a motion.
I don't hear anyone jumping in to read this one, so I'll take a shot at it. I move approval of Resolution 19-128, a resolution approving the following low bids for the golf course maintenance equipment for the total amount of $140,706.6. A MDX Vanguard Utility Vehicle Kart for $6,953.79. Realmaster 3575 Fairway Mower for $44,204. And a three-wheel self-powered aerofire for $23,542.27 from MTI Distributing of Bettendorf, Iowa. And B, a John Deere 2020A Pro Gator Utility Vehicle with HD200 Sprayer Attachment for $36,900. And a 2500B Greens Mower for $29,100 from Vanwall of Rock Island, Illinois.
Second. Motion made in second. Counsel discussion.
I think Rod did a great job reading that.
That's a lot of stuff.
This may be more of a James question, but the fact that we purchased this equipment through a loan versus bonding for it, those type of things has always seemed kind of unique, I guess. I'm not sure if that's just because of the way the fee schedule is set up for golf, those type of things, or. Don't want to put you on the spot.
Nope, that's okay. My understanding of it is that to kind of keep it, to keep the budget from real highs at different times, highs and your peaks and valleys, if you will, that we do this loan, so it's $50,000 for, each year for three years. And so the budget kind of stays flat. That's my understanding of why we do it through the loan.
And it's now we continue to struggle with the subsidy of the golf course and it's good to see maybe this is one way of keeping somewhat in check or at least a level as far as the budgeting process is concerned.
Any other comments, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Cengis.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Wollstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Resolution 19-128, approving low bids for golf course maintenance equipment is hereby approved, 7-0. Resolution 19-129, a resolution approving well number five inspection and repair invoice. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-129, resolution approving well number five inspection and repair invoice from Northway Well and Pump Company of Marion, Iowa for $53,977.73.
Second.
Motion made in second. Counsel discussion, questions?
Just a little background might be nice. Sounds like these were some unexpected issues that were found.
Mike, would you enlighten us?
So I imagine you can all visualize a well is below ground, readily seen from the surface. And in order to get an accurate assessment as to the condition, you actually have to extract the pump and the casing from within the ground. So we, we do this routinely, typically every, you know, five to eight years is kind of a good practice to do that. And we had an original estimate to do this with the intent that there'd maybe be some minor repairs and work that'd be done. That estimate was $16,000. But upon extracting the pump and casing, it was determined that the pump, well casing were determined, that major repairs were needed to re, excuse me. Upon doing this, this inspection, it was determined that major repairs were needed to replace the pump, the electric motor, and well casing that were all in early or imminent stages of failure. I wasn't aware, but evidently you can acquire insurance for this. And I'm not involved in the city's insurance. And lo and behold, we, we actually have insurance to cover mechanical failures of this nature. So we submitted a claim to the city's insurance carrier based off of the repair estimate. And so they reviewed it and immediately turned around us and cut us a check for about But the final repair cost was a little bit higher than that, and so we have resubmitted. And out of the $54,000 repair bill, the city's responsibility would be $1,000.
Will that affect our insurance going forward?
So that was one of those things where your, your heart sinks when you get the, it's kind of like your automobile, when the mechanic gives you the bad news and your heart sinks. And then upon talking to Carla and investigating it further with the insurance company, it's a covered claim.
This is not the well that we just dealt with three weeks ago, something like that?
Well.
We replaced a motor and a pump on one? Is this the same well?
This is the well. This is the work. A few years ago, we did well number seven. We had some, some issues with that well, but this, this is well number five.
Okay, very good.
I think it's important to say that not all mechanical failures are covered by insurance. There's a lot of inspection and things like that that go into it, age and warranties and they, you're, you know, kind of like your usual wear and tear on a car. It's kind of, equipment is taken in the same light.
So I might just, out of curiosity, where is well number five?
It's over by the high school administration office at the intersection of Fourth Avenue and 16th Street southwest.
And it appears it was a good thing that we inspected it when we did.
That's what I got out of this. Timeliness is everything. And so as Rod, you were indicating that doing housing studies every so often is a good thing. You know, again, that's why making sure that major pieces of our, of our infrastructure are inspected or evaluated on a regular basis is, is really helpful and important for the health of the community.
Very good. Any other comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Cengis.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Wollstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Resolution 19-129, approving well five inspection and repair invoice carried 7-0. Resolution 19-130, a resolution approving change order number one, accepting the Adams Parkway Bridge Repair 2019 Project as complete and approving pay estimate number three as a final, final pay request. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-130, a resolution approving change order number one in the amount of $40,972.37 increase, accepting the Adams Parkway Bridge Repair 2019 Project as complete and approving pay estimate number three in the amount of $21,741.43 as the final pay request to Kramer and Associates of Grimes, Iowa.
Second.
Motion made in second. Counsel discussion, questions?
I have a question for Mike. In the summary statement that we have on this project, there's reference to, the additional cost comes from tripling the quantity of Class A bridge deck. I don't really understand what tripling means. Why do we do that?
Motion made, second. Council discussion, questions?
I have a question for Mike. In the summary statement that we have on this project, there's reference to the additional cost comes from tripling the quantity of Class A bridge deck. I don't really understand what tripling means. Why do we do that?
Well, we went from eighty-two square yards of repair on the deck to two hundred and sixty-four square yards. So it ended up being far more substantial than originally mapped out. So upon getting into the project where they grind the surface and then they sound the surface for defects in the concrete, it was just over three times the surface area that had to be repaired.
And that was, if I understood this correctly, about forty thousand or forty-one thousand dollars higher than originally...
That's the dollar value.
Anticipated.
Yeah, it's two hundred dollars a square yard to do the repair work. We're very fortunate that we didn't have any full-depth repairs that went all the way through the bridge deck, but, you know, again, this is kind of timeliness. We had originally intended to do this project two years ago, but because of the Bremer Avenue work, or the Highway Three work, it was rescheduled to occur after Bremer Avenue was completed. So in that respect, you know, it's continuing to age, continuing to deteriorate, and, you know, we kind of found ourselves chasing the quantity on this. We were able to realize about thirteen thousand dollar savings, thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars in the construction observation because WHKS utilized the same inspector as was working on the Cedar River Parkway Bridge. So he would split his time between the projects, and that resulted in a thirteen to fifteen thousand dollar savings on the engineering observation.
What is account number three sixteen?
That's for, that's the capital improvement account for the bridge, bridge project.
So why is that listed separately? Oh, I see, because it was eighteen nineteen versus nineteen twenty?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Cengis.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Resolution nineteen dash one thirty, approving change order number one and final payment for the Adams Parkway Bridge is approved, seven-zero. Third and final reading of ordinance ten sixty-three, an ordinance providing for rezoning of property owned by Wavetown Properties located at thirteen sixteen, thirteen sixteen Fourth Street southwest from R one Single Family Residential to C two Commercial. Entertain a motion.
I move approval of resolution... Oh, no, sorry. Ordinance sixteen, ten sixty-three. No, that's not...
Yeah, ten sixty-three.
Okay, sorry about that. Anyway, it's exactly as the mayor read it, so I will go ahead and move that.
Second.
Resolution.
Motion made, second to approve. Third and final reading of ordinance ten sixty-three. Any council discussion, questions?
I'm assuming there have been no further comments from the public regarding this, any of the neighbors?
No, not to me.
No.
Roll call vote, please.
Raffi.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
No.
Cengis.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Resolution nineteen dash one thirty-one, approving plat of survey for parcel H and accepting the right-of-way warranty deed for Thirty-Ninth Street Northeast. Entertain a motion.
I move approval of resolution nineteen dash one thirty-one, approving a plat of survey for parcel H and accepting the right-of-way warranty deed for Thirty-Ninth Street Northeast from the property owner, Hanawalt Farms LLC.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. Questions for Bill?
Do you maybe just want to talk about the right-of-way so people understand?
What we did is, this is a future collector street, and it would be good to have it be a hundred wide, a hundred foot wide. So we asked for this owner to give us the extra seventeen feet, and what we did was he got fifty feet to confirm the original to the center line. So it'd be fifty feet from the center line, so it includes thirty-three and then the additional seventeen feet. And that goes all the way to the top of that parcel. And that's good for utilities. It's where we'll put the sanitary sewer connection that would go to that property.
And I'm trying to remember, what was the... We purchased that, right? What was it from Hanawalt?
We did not purchase the right-of-way. It was dedicated to us.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Cengis.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Cengis.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Resolution nineteen dash one thirty-one, approving plat of survey for parcel H, accepting the right-of-way from Hanawalt Farms hereby approved, seven-zero. Resolution nineteen dash one thirty-two, a resolution setting dates of a consultation and a public hearing on a proposed amendment number five to the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan in the city of Waverly, state of Iowa. Entertain a motion.
I move approval of resolution nineteen one thirty-two, setting August thirteenth, two thousand nineteen at eight AM in the office of the city attorney at City Hall. Date time and place for the consultation with taxing authorities, and setting September ninth, two thousand nineteen at seven PM in the council chambers of City Hall is the date time and place for a public hearing on a proposed amendment, on a proposed amendment number five to the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan in the city of Waverly, state of Iowa.
Second.
Motion made, second. Just a quick clarification, I note, say, August twelfth. Is that August twelfth or August thirteenth?
Yeah, the consultation is August twelfth.
Yeah.
Okay. So I need to change that. All right, so the, change what I said from August thirteenth to August twelfth.
Okay, very good. Okay, council discussion, questions? Bill, do you want to enlighten us on...
Primarily, what we really wanted to do is make sure that the project that we're doing to extend the sewer main east of that property to the Hanawalt property would be a TIF, an urban renewal project that we could spend money on, if we need to spend TIF money on that. We haven't decided how we're going to fund that project, but it would give us the opportunity to use that TIF funds for that. In addition, that property is becoming, well, actually Nutrien that bought Schneider Milling is dividing that property so that there'll be two companies on that north side. And that potentially could be a more development on that particular property, too, so that sewer main will serve the new properties that Nutrien has on the north side and on the south side. Other than that, the thirty-four acres that we're doing the entire thing, if you notice the plat, parcel H in the last item, it shows it going up to the, kind of, to the north side. There's a, if you go across the street on the Thirty-Ninth Street side, it's the top of those two parcels that are along Highway Three. So there's basically an intersection that could go east or west from Thirty-Ninth, and so we'll have the sewer main to that, to that intersection there so that it can serve properties on the east and west side of the street, potentially.
But what you're saying, Bill, is that by doing this, it doesn't tie us or mandate in any way that we would have to be using TIF in the future, but it provides an option?
Right. It actually makes it a plan, it makes it a project that we can spend money on, and we don't have to put any property in the TIF ordinance if we don't want to. The minimum is that we amend the plan to allow for that project. And then we allow the property to be in the plan, because it has to be in the plan to do that, too. At the same time, instead of doing another amendment in the near future, we decided to add back the properties on Fourth Street that we had taken out for the purpose of resetting those, because they never were developed during the twenty years that they were in the TIF ordinance. So that's why we put those in there. We haven't brought you the ordinance yet, because we still haven't decided what properties we are going to try to put in the TIF ordinance. That's a separate thing. That's where you start the increment being captured. So that's really the important part as far as when the taxing authorities lose some of that revenue. When we talk to the school and the board of supervisors, we talk about what properties might go in, and we want to be, actually work on just getting those properties in when they need to be in, and not just speculatively putting those properties in. So it could be one property, it could be none, it could be two at this point. We'll wait for a couple of weeks and see what happens.
Okay, any other questions? Comments? Roll call vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Cengis.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Cengis.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Resolution nineteen dash one thirty-two, setting a date of consultation and a public hearing on a proposed amendment number five to the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan carried seven-zero. Approval of Merrill appointments following for the upper Cedar Watershed Management Improvement Authority for terms ending May thirtieth, or May of two thousand and twenty-three. Kiplidegi, Ron Lant, and Stephen Main have all agreed to be reappointed. And we checked some bylaws and found that they asked for a four-year term instead of a one-year, which had got, somehow it got slipped in, so...
I would move approval of the Merrill appointments.
Second.
Discussion.
Just curious, how often does that group meet? It seemed like after any major flooding event, they kind of ramp up, but I didn't know if they were continuing to meet, or...
Think the bylaws call for four times a year, if I remember right. Carla happened to have a whole file, and we were trying to figure out what was going on, so I read through.
Maybe a fifteen-minute updated planning session sometime, or just to understand what that group is actually working on and how we may be able to help their cause.
Waverly and Bremer County are both members of that statewide organization. There's several counties and cities involved, so... Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of Merrill appointments, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? They are approved. Reports from boards and commissions. Library Board of Trustees minutes June eleventh, two thousand nineteen, received in the record. Brings us to staff comments.
Sheriff?
Sheriff and Mike, both?
I was just going to let everyone know, we're holding on to the end of the pool season. We're hoping to get to either Saturday, August eighteen, or Sunday, August nineteenth, I'm sorry, Saturday, August seventeen, or Sunday, August eighteen, for our last day at the pool. After that, we have not set a dog swim date yet, but it will be right there in that area as well, either Sunday, the eighteenth, up until Wednesday. What would that be, the twenty-first? I'm meeting with the Dog Park Group tomorrow, and we're going to try to set a date for that.
How was attendance this year compared to the past?
I don't have all the numbers together yet, but I will say we had a really good three-week span there where it was, you know, mid-eighties to low to mid-nineties, no rains, no storms that whole time, and we were pulling in around four hundred and twenty to four hundred and fifty a day. So we did really well for a two to three-week span.
Mike, you have some comments?
Middle of next week. I don't know if that means Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, but we're monitoring the progress of them wrapping up the work on the Cedar River Parkway, and so hopefully in the next day or so, we'll be able to establish a kind of a firm date for when we are going to open the Parkway. But it looks like it'll be sometime middle of next week.
So it'll be before our next meeting?
Yes, that's why I'm going to give you heads up now. We will certainly, as soon as we do know, we will get the word out to the council, get it out to the public, get it out to the paper as to when that date is.
We're going to borrow big scissors and ribbon from the chamber, so...
So is the mayor going to have to cut a ribbon at both ends?
I have no idea what's being planned.
I'll try and get a tool and spike because I'm going to walk up there.
That's great.
No, it is coming along nicely, and Waverly Utilities had some plates to put up on the bridge yet, and there's odds and ends, all kinds of, I think they're still staining part of the fake limestone, but it'll be, it'll be nice. It's a nice addition. Any other staff comments?
I don't think so.
Council comments?
I have a couple of questions. Can I get an update on the status of the exchange building, and when do we think that will be finished?
Yep, I actually met the architect and the head foreman down there on, must have been on Friday morning, and went through the building and everything. It's coming along. It's probably about two and a half to three weeks out for the building to be done. If you've driven by, you see that the scale, the deck is done. They just got dirt put back around and kind of the, put stone in front of the sidewalk, so we won't have people falling off the edge of the sidewalk or anything like that on either end. And then we're going to be, city staff will be seeding that here in the near future.
Cedar Lane construction, that's gotten started, I assume? It seemed like it was delayed a week, but it got started. Is that going as expected?
It's going faster now, and a bird was ringing in my ear here that they're starting to cut grade, shape, basically shape and compact the subbase, as well as they're working on the storm sewer pipe up by Second Avenue, so construction activity is really ramped up. So what Pete was saying, Mike, Mike, remind them that unless you live along there, you know, now's not a good time, especially during the workday, to be walking up and down or trying to drive through the corridor. Right now with the activity, you know, we're doing our best to keep the adjacent property owners notified as to whether, you know, both ends are accessible, or whether one end of the project is closed, which end to do, but we don't do that for the general public, because they shouldn't be down there anyway. So that's what we're trying to reinforce, that I know people like to go out for the
Right now with the activity, you know, we're doing our best to keep the adjacent property owners notified as to whether, you know, both ends are accessible or whether one end of the project is closed, which end to do, but we don't do that for the general public because they shouldn't be down there anyway. So that's what we're trying to reinforce, that I know people like to go out for the walk in the evening, that's probably okay, but during the workday, best to stay clear.
That's why I'm asking you for an update, so I'm resisting the temptation to go look for myself. Let's see, other things I wanted to mention, so this past weekend, I was at the Iowa Irish Fest down in Waterloo. I had a rollicking good time. I may or may not have run into our city administrator there, that may or may not be why he's not here, because he's having too much fun. But that has grown in 15 years from a very small festival to a very big festival, and I'd just like to have people keep in mind, you know, when we talk about the Waverly Oktoberfest and some of the great things that are going on, you know, I can't imagine that growing to 20,000 people attending, but it is nice to see how some of these small things can grow into something really exciting. So I enjoyed, this was my first trip to the Irish Fest, I really enjoyed it, and I'd like to encourage people to take advantage of the Oktoberfest when it comes around and just kind of think about things like that growing. And then last thing, I will be at the Wooden Foot afterward for anyone who wants to share beer and discuss current topics.
Good, thank you. Any other council comments?
Real quick, have we had any conversations with the fair recently about their plans now that we're kind of reevaluating Ball Diamonds? And I kind of ask it on the backdrop of what appears to be a successful fair week for them, but it is one of the topics in town that I get a lot of emails and phone calls on, and they've outgrown their space. The neighborhood down there would appreciate them finding something different, so.
Several weeks ago, they said that they wouldn't be talking about anything until after the fair, and so we haven't heard anything yet.
Kind of assumed that. And then it may be due to the fact that fewer people are walking on Cedar Lane, but I've got several questions about the property at 503 East Bremer, as far as the overgrowth, and folks are almost impossible to walk on the sidewalk now with some of the overgrowth. Can I talk to Garrett a little bit about it?
We understand that the property became the property of a bank based on a foreclosure. There's some things that happened after that that are some redemption times. We are going to push them to correct those things.
Did it? Okay.
If you might indulge me just a minute here. On August 6th of last year, the city council voted to accept the Iowa Department of Transportation's recommendation to convert Bremer Avenue from four lanes to three lanes. This vote was based on information presented at a council by the DOT that the conversion or road diet would improve safety on Bremer Avenue. Concerns were raised by citizens and council about increased congestion, travel times, emergency response times, and among others. Since the conversion, many of these concerns have been repeatedly brought before the council. In addition, concerns were raised about the information presented by the DOT. This issue has sparked a lot of strong opinions in the community, some based on different information, some based on wild and inaccurate speculation, but negative publicity has spread beyond the city, and that concerns me. Council rules prohibit revisiting a resolution for one year after a resolution has been acted on unless brought up by a member of the winning vote. Since we are now at the one-year mark of that vote, and I have been unable to bring this up until now, I would like to add an agenda item for August 19 to reconsider the conversion of Bremer Avenue from four lanes to three lanes, including discussion of potential costs for that and to include a revisit of the safety data presented to the council, as well as a look at the data that we have since the conversion to determine if safety has been improved.
Staff will take note and do what we can do.
I'll speak with James when he gets back.
That would be my presumption, that that's what would happen, okay? Any other council comments? I only have one question, Bill, do we, do we know anything about how the historic law offs are coming?
I know they're still working. They have a lot of cars down there, they have a lot of contractors in the building. I don't have any estimates as to finish. I know they were doing drywalling and doing more finish work on the inside than they were doing actual construction walls, that those have been done. So I think they're, they're getting there on the side of finishing as opposed to still constructing.
Very good. Other than that, I have no comments. Further comments? To, next item is to just move into an executive session to discuss strategy with council in matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent or its disclosure would likely, would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage position of the governmental body in that litigation as provided by Section 21.5 of the Code of Iowa. Entertain a motion to move into executive session.
I move that we enter into executive session.
Second.
It has to be a full.
Roll call vote.
Oh, now you tell me that. I, let's see, I move that we enter into executive session to discuss strategy with council in matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position.
Section 21.5 of the Code of Iowa.